Well, it's after eight, we'll get started. We'll forego with all the other formalities, we'll get started on this public transportation agreement.
I had an opportunity to look at it. I think Chad added this section that was important for us. And that was down in section fourteen. And so with that addition, I would go ahead and move to approve to enter into the transportation agreement for the rural public transportation. Catcher on that.
Yeah. I would second that. We'll pass. Catcher on that. They're important to a lot of people, so we need to do what we can. I think this is all new with Endot. I don't know how Endot really got involved, other than the fact they're using state roads to travel.
I was gonna say, I think it's because of the funding sources that they get, that they've added this layer of oversight. And it's all brand new to this year, is my understanding, that they've never had to do this before. So that's kind of why everybody was caught unaware. We got two today. Yes, and I guess just so we're all aware, I did send my proposed changes through to the representatives yesterday afternoon. I did not get a response from them. But, I mean, I think the county's position is the added language is absolutely necessary and non-negotiable, so. Passing that is appropriate.
I agree, Chad.
If you disagree with that?
I.
Do they get them back in to you?
They need it today.
And it's the deadlines that have been granted.
You're saying, just tell them they can pick it up in the courthouse anytime before board? Okay.
All right, Mindy.
So I had received a call or a message over the, I guess, last week. And I had messaged with Mindy and the chief, and I ended up having a phone call. And it kind of brought to light some additional or continuing issues, if you will, that we're seeing for the availability of animal control officers and issues within the county that are taking place, a lot of them down in Westport. This was again another call that I had received down in Westport for dogs running loose. And so after the conversation Mindy and I had, we decided to just go ahead and throw it onto this special session.
Are you familiar with the agreement that Westport and the county had several years ago?
No. See, that was before my time. I've only been here four years in this.
Westport, at one time, that current board told the county they were not to come to Westport?
I don't know that.
I don't know. I think, because they created their own little dog pound.
Oh, they even created their own little ordinance. And honestly, I can't enforce their ordinance, right?
Correct. It's just like, at about that same time as when they withdrew from county inspection, building inspections, they were gonna do their own little thing. So I don't know how that stands today. I just wanted to add that, because I know Jeremy probably has never heard of that.
I didn't know that, yeah.
And see, that's why I want clarification.
So I don't know.
What is it that I need to do with these incorporated little towns and stuff, you know?
Well, if they have their own ordinance, which I wasn't aware of that either, then it's their problem.
Yeah, they got their own cages and pens.
If it's inside Westport.
Because he told me that was the reason they had set up those dog pens out behind their police department, is they were supposed to put those running at large animals in there. And then we were supposed to pick up from there.
Yeah, they didn't want our because, and I don't know who the. Can't remember who the. In your position at the time, what started that, somebody each shot?
Was it Ashley or?
No, no, no. I think it might have been clear back to Mike Winnie.
Oh, the animal control officer.
Shot a dog inside the city limits of Westport, and that's what started this whole shenanigans. That happened even before I was a commissioner, but that's where that ordinance started. That's why they, of course, at that time, those pins, I'm not sure, they were over behind the old town halls thing.
Right. See, I wouldn't be aware if there was any out there.
The town marshal was to pick those dogs up and put them in those pens, then the county's animal control guy come pick them up from there. They didn't want us running the streets with them.
And then saying that we're not coming out to the county, that is very untrue. Spent a lot of time last week, week before, out in Westport. But you know, we never go out there.
Brian, I guess Brian would, Gate would be who we need to contact to see how, what their feelings are. They got a holding board now, and they may have changed. But there was, I'm pretty sure there was an ordinance written for that effect.
Okay. And then, so he got a call that I didn't go out on the call. And it was election day, which was our day off. And it was right around eight o'clock. If you were in the pack of here, I pulled that call, it was a running at large. We don't do running at large.
Can you just explain why you don't do running at large?
It's just what it is. Because if they can't catch it, how am I gonna catch it? I mean, you know, and there's only one animal control officer. And you know what, if you get other calls, I mean.
They're thirty minutes away.
Where's the dog gonna be?
Right.
Well, and quite frankly, I don't have any right now, but I used to have two dogs on my farm. And they, everybody in our neighborhood's got dogs. I just, how do you, like, I'll call the, her, a neighbor's dog come over. And then he first moved, and he come over and dropped a load on my back deck. I wasn't happy about it, I just gave him a call. They came clean it up, make sure the dog's never been back, so I guess they had a good time with him.
We've got some good stories there. Or nobody ended up at my house, miles, two miles away.
And the county people take care of it themselves. Like, you've got a dog out there bothering your livestock and your livelihood. And there's really nothing you can do. And by state guidelines, there's really no running at large, so. Oh, and then let's go back to. Say, pray. Wednesday night. So my phone started ringing at eleven twenty-two PM. And it rang constantly until like eleven thirty-one, till I finally answered it. So they would stop calling me back, back dispatch, wanting me to go out and pick up a dog, because they had somebody stopped, and they had a warrant. And I said, no. I said, you guys have the code, drop it off. That's what they have the code for. And because, you know, the on-call hours are between eight AM and eight PM. And it's just, and they'll call me on Sundays, they'll call me on Mondays, which are my Saturday and Sunday. And it's, it's just stupid stuff. And you know, my animal control officer, the only one that applied, he lives in Franklin, so he's an hour away. So he's not gonna be able to, you know, take on-call stuff. And you know, I made the agreement with council that I would do it for a year, do both jobs in order to get my second kennel tech. And I've helped, I've helped do that, actually, I've done it for a year and a half. So I've been doing two jobs, and I'm just tired. I need to concentrate on my part of the job.
Has it been like the standard practice for, like in that kind of a situation where somebody stopped, and they have a warrant, they're going to jail, and they have an animal? Has there been a standard practice for sheriff's department, police department, take that animal to your facility?
Yeah, that's what they're supposed to do throughout the on-call, hours are over.
Did you talk at all with Erica out of dispatch about that? Because if there's some work, maybe not.
Is she the one that complained?
Not to me. I didn't know if you talked to her at all.
Yeah, they may not know what to expectation.
And that's.
No, I have sent this to them many times, so they know.
There's always, I mean, there's always turnover, both in dispatch and also with your road deputies or road officers. And in a lot of other counties, in those situations, they wouldn't be calling animal control. And.
Right.
So it might be something where I don't know the officer that had made the stop.
See, I don't even know if it was city or county, because the dispatcher just yesterday, yesterday said it was city. And then I talked to Rob last night, close before, and he said, I think it was in the county. I'm assuming it was out on the interstate, is what happened.
And that's possible. So it might be worth a conversation to Erica, to the chief, and to the sheriff, just to kind of reiterate that policy. Because, I mean, when new people come in, they're training either from a different county, if they were a lateral move from a different department here, or if they were fresh out of the academy, or somebody just forgets. It might be worth one of those things of just brushing up law enforcement on what it is. I know I regularly have to do that in my other job. So. So it might just be, I think it'd be beneficial for you to reach out to them and talk with them about that specific policy. I don't know if there's been a difference historically in the past, if there's like an aggressive dog versus something that's meek and mild and you can easily handle. I don't know if there's ever been a difference in the response in those situations.
And I mean, I have been known to go out after hours. I mean, like, when Jonathan Hager decided to get smoked out here by Stonebird Trucking. And that was a hot mess. He had a mean dog in the car with him, and they took him off to the hospital. And, you know, we're down in this ditch, and gas is running everywhere. We had to sedate that dog, it was so mean. It was like a hundred pound dog. Dragged it up that wet hill, because Rob called me. So I know that when Rob calls me and says, hey, dear. So, you know, I went on out for him, and that was ten, thirty or so at night. I mean, so there have been times that I woke up after hours. But, you know, it's just getting to the point that it's too much.
Chad, thank you.
I was just, I found the town of Westport's ordinance, and I'm just reading through it, but.
There's something about they can't have more than six dogs in.
Well, I mean, it's actually like a thirteen-page comprehensive animal control ordinance. But you keep referring to an animal control manager. Is that within our department, or do you know, do they have a designated individual?
I think they're probably referring to us.
Well, because it's undefined. Animal Control Authority, they include you guys, as well as a designated representative of the town of Westport, or the Animal Control Board, including the animal control manager and animal control officer or police enforcement officers. So I assume all those animal controls are references to you. Which, does that make you, again, they don't define some of these terms, so I'm trying to distinguish. Because it seems like they do have several expectations in their ordinance with us, which I guess leads to the question of, do they contribute to our animal control in money? Like, do they make payment? Because if they're in an incorporated city, they should either be paying us for this service or servicing themselves, I would think. I don't do budget stuff, but as I'm reading through this, it seems like they took the liberty of including our services into their city. That's not necessarily a norm.
My understanding for funding is county council sets the budget, and then the city of Greensboro pays half of that.
Right, so.
We don't get it from any Melhausen.
We don't get any of the small incorporated cities, don't contribute. Because they have an ordinance, they have their own animal person. I'm not sure that their ordinance can direct us what to do with our departments.
You want me to talk to Ron?
If you want, I would watch your three times a week. That's fine, I was, I was gonna call him, or you could just talk to him.
You know, I. He'll be at our, we've got fishing radio tomorrow, so.
But now like neglect, I mean, we do have to go out to look for neglect and stuff like that. I mean, that definitely has to be done. Actually, I'm meeting the state that Monday at eleven thirty, and we're gonna go out and look at free ag properties. And two of them are in New Point, and one of them is, that's not in Westport. Two county cases of owners, horses.
When I get back to a real computer, I will forward this ordinance around to everybody so they can see it.
And I was just asking what their expectations are, whether they're working. So it's clear.
And then my next question is, so there is online where the county does have a county ordinance. But I have been told from the get-go that you guys do not follow this one, and that you go by like the Board of Animal Health state guidelines. Or because of considering county being agricultural. And that it's like a large animal out there, pretty much. Because there isn't a leash law out in the county, see, people get so ticked. You know, when the dogs are running between their yards and stuff like that, there's not a leash law. I don't know what to tell you. And that's through the state, there isn't one. And I was told that by many deputies, too. That the county doesn't have the ordinance that they follow.
So what are you suggesting, or?
Well, I just want clarification on what I need to be following. And then I will be more than happy to enforce whatever you guys tell me to enforce.
If there's an ordinance, that's an ordinance. If you need to change the ordinance, we gotta look into that, so.
That's fine, then that's good, because then there's clarification there, and then. That'll help a lot.
I'm not never looked it up, or you?
I was gonna say, I tried to find it for.
Can you just go to, like, where you looked up the city ones and?
I have to believe there is an ordinance, because I know Tony had asked me about instituting a penalty and fine provision within our animal control ordinance to, you know, attempt to recapture all the work and expense that we outlay.
It's in there.
It is in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, in our ordinance? Okay. Because that's one that I hadn't really looked at much before, but. But I think his thought was, if it's there, why aren't we enforcing it? What's the point in having an ordinance?
The thing is, you can make, I mean, you can fine people, but they just look at you like, okay. And they pay it.
Because then it comes down to whether or not the commissioners want to start pursuing enforcement actions to actually elect our fines and penalties.
How do we, how do we enforce if it's not a property owner?
What's that?
How do we enforce if it's not a property owner?
And then start getting judgments, ordering judgment links, but, I mean, that, it's a cost-benefit analysis of, you know, you're probably only likely to collect about thirty percent of your judgments, and how much you would spend to get the judgments. It would become a fairly streamlined process after, you know, first dozen or so, because then everything's prepared, and it's just swapping out names. But that's the reality of it, is getting a judgment, just make it a nice piece of paper to hang on the wall. Doesn't really turn it into money, especially if they are non-property owners. Do you collect your impoundment fees before you release, or do you write them a bill and give them their animal?
No, normally, in a perfect world, we would collect them. But we just install it way, it's like just taken.
That you can't.
And then, what's the thing that we had been doing when we were getting a lot of like strays in that had owners? I'd be like, listen, I'm gonna waive your fines, but you're gonna pay thirty dollars to get a microchip. So then that way, if it ever comes back, then we can scan it, and we know. Then you're gonna get fined, is what I tell them. Because we're collecting full again.
Well, and I mean, if we're going to talk about amending the ordinance, maybe we include that as a provision to reduce the recidivism, which is, you know, first level penalty is microchipping at our cost and reimbursed by you when the animal leaves. And then that hopefully cuts down on their workload on the backend. And then we start, second offense is fine penalty. But if we think we need to take a crack at redoing a bunch of these provisions, then we can use it to benefit the program as well.
Yeah, I did find microchips a lot cheaper than the home again, so.
Is that something you can, once you have the equipment, you can do on-site, or do you still have to send them out for? Okay. Yeah.
But, and when it comes to the on-call, you know, I would like to, myself personally, get away from it.
What do you think the viability is of having a second personal call?
Well, when we advertised for a part-time one. Nobody applied.
No one.
No, and Robert was the only one that applied for a full-time.
So how long was he doing? Seemed to be pretty dependable. Gets excited. So how do we?
It's a tough job to fill, I'm sure it is.
How do we fill the gap, then? If you don't think that we can.
From you guys, for some of the guidance.
I know there are some members of council that think we shouldn't be doing on-call at all.
And the thing is, like.
So then is the expectation, so is the expectation, and then we're completely shifting it to enforcement?
Possibly, and when the shelter board has talked through that. We've got the truck with the cages and everything in it. Is there a solution where, because it's been brought up that the city probably wouldn't want to transport animals in their vehicles specifically? Is there a solution where we could make the keys available, where if there was a transport need, that they could pick up the truck and. Transport that way without hurting their vehicles potentially, and it keeps the animal safer?
I haven't called a dog in.
I mentioned, um, corner, set it up kind of like a corner that they have, they have several people on-call, but they pay a low hourly rate. And then if they go out on a call, they get paid on call. I guess I just think, how do they have so many? I mean, you know, I would think that, you know, if you incentivize a little bit, they pay like two dollars and twenty-five cents an hour to be on-call, and a hundred and seventy-five to go out, which is dealing with a, you know, that's high. But even like a fifty-dollar call-out or some, you know, I mean, incentivize, you might get. I just think of my, you know, think of all of our jobs, it's like, are we, we get paid the same, we wanna get paid the same amount to be on-call from until eight o'clock to nine, every day?
And also, I don't think we could impose that expectations on the current kennel techs, because that's not what they were hired in to do. And just knowing their personalities, I don't think that going out on calls would be something that they would be interested in.
So this list is call-outs?
Those are, yeah, those are like during the day.
Okay, that's what I.
Yeah.
Actually, I want it to be timeout, time back in, if any.
Yep.
And?
Yeah.
And do you get called to like Melhausen?
Yeah.
I'm very often, though. But we go.
Yeah.
I like Christie's idea. I don't know if the council would.
I brought it up before, too, yeah. Not anything formally, but that's when it came up, why are we even on-calling?
I think there's a need for it, for a number of reasons. So I think it'd be worth looking into maybe restructuring. I don't know if we only pay them two whatever an hour, and that does seem low. But I think it would be, I think it would be decent to try to restructure the on-call to see if maybe we can get somebody else and, and. Try to alleviate some of the stress.
If you're talking about restructuring it, though, are you still wanting to uphold the eight AM to eight PM? Or are you thinking that it goes beyond?
I would, I mean, personally, I would think we need to go past eight PM.
I know. After four, right? And you want to be after.
It would start at four.
Start at four.
I would think.
Got the coverage.
Yeah, I think it needs to go after like eight PM, no matter however it is that you want to make that time. Because, I mean, I know there's a lot of shenanigans that happen later at night.
Yeah, four at midnight, or four to eleven, might get you better coverage. Especially summertime, if you don't get dark at night. Anyway, that's a big, that's a, that's a, work it out for council.
Okay, Mindy. Overtime, you know, I mean, you get a lot of comp hours and stuff, and then pay now, so I don't, I.
Financial might be better. If you find a person.
Yeah, because I'd much rather the comp time be spent on like fundraising, or, you know, like. A PR base or whatever, you know? Trying to market our animal.
If we're going to extend the hours, education has to happen regardless of what we're called out for. But I think we would need to have an even stronger education effort to define what they were being called out for. But then also, if you do get complaints about them not responding to something, that you guys stand up for them and say, no, the definition is this, so.
I agree, and I agree with the not responding to running at large. I mean, that's, it's why I wanted you to say that, so that other people, because it is still recording up there, so that other people would understand why you wouldn't be responding to a running at large.
And that's what we've explained to people in the public, just like with that Akita that was running around out there by the Walmart for about, what, six, eight months? Dave Shidler didn't, didn't end up keeping, he caught it. So he's getting ready to fix it, and, but, you know, be like, listen, if you guys can't catch it, how are we gonna catch it? And, well, it's winter time, it's an Akita, it's fine, it's bred for this one.
Yeah, so I agree with that. I mean, we can, if we even have to, as far as the policy lists, specific types of calls that we would respond to. Mindy, if you would want to draft that, I would have no issue looking at that and adopting that policy. So that we can expand, if we can get somebody else, so that we can expand our available hours and then we can have a mutation on what it is. But I would also, I mean, even just right now, I, I'd still go back and talk to Erica, both of your heads at the law enforcement agencies. And I mean, reach out, reach out to Westport, talk, talk in ten, um, talk to Josh Kings, um, up in St. Paul. So that they know what the expectation is and what they'll be working on.
Yeah. And that's the thing, you know, I've always thought that, you know, I've had a really good working relationship with like Josh and Joe. And then all of a sudden it's just like all these complaints coming in from Westport. And I'm like, what have I done to you? I've always went out there.
Well, Joe's been off. I mean, he's back now. Joe was off six or eight or nine months, I think. And the other fella, Luke, is a, I'm told, not a Facebook person, but he's big on Facebook and grew some really big blast at. Town just came up last night at a meeting down there. The town's proposing putting in pickleball courts over the tennis courts. And he put a blast out on Facebook, I guess, that why in the world would they ever think about putting pickleball courts when we need to spend a half million dollars growing our park? Where in the world's Westport am I going to get five hundred thousand dollars to grow the park? And I thought pickleball courts were kind of part of the park. So I'm not sure he's defending himself.
What else you got?
Um, did you put the grant information in there?
Yeah.
Yes, I did. That's like sixty thousand dollars when we asked for eighteen-five and that's what I ended up with.
That's fantastic.
We have the twenty-seven thousand dollar one from Rachel Ray.
Rob's somebody.
I'm a peach to work with. Okay.
I've heard that.
You've taken my phone call before.
Yes, Chris. Do you need to put the van?
But they know about it. That's where that, yeah, they're buying that van, that transport van.
The Grantis.
And what to talk about that so we can add it to insurance?
Last I heard that they were, they had it in their shop and they were getting it inspected and yeah. And then they were going to have it wrapped, but I told them to hold up. I needed to get them the. Hater County logo. I like mine better, but I'll use that one. But yeah. Cause it'll, it'll have best friends on it as well. But I mean, they're the one paying for it.
Do you have a chance to go through, look through that insurance? Any changes or any?
No, I mean, between you and I at the last meeting, I think we get the questions that I had. Anything else, Mindy? I say talk with the council, uh, see if they're willing to do something and possibly restructuring some type of A scale. And then see if we can get a second person defining what your hours are that you want to cover, uh, when you're looking for somebody. And if you get that far, then we can talk about, um, some type of policy that would be defining your funds that you'd be going to. In general, not just on-call, but just. And then we can be, at some point, if you talk with Brian and see what their expectations or thoughts are. Anything else? All right, I'd move to recess.
We are, we're says.